This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone. We will open this meeting of October 19th, 2023. I'd like to start it off with pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We're gonna sidestep the agenda for one second because we have somebody that's looking to speak to the board. John, do you wanna come up or use the podium? You need to do a microphone.
Okay. So I'm here today to talk to you about Laconia. I'm sorry. Yeah, my name is John Bernard, and I'm here to talk to you about a piece of property that I own on 246 Laconia Road. It is a 50-acre site, and it is right now is in resort commercial. And what I'm proposing, or what I'm asking really for the temperature of the Board of Selectmen, is the possibility of it getting changed over to the mixed-use-two zone. And the reason to do that is we'd like to do a multiple of things, a village-like setting, which is designed for assisted living, workforce houses, and a few businesses. So I'll open that up and have you, or can you give me your feelings regarding mixed-use-two zone?
What is it now?
It is resort commercial now. So in 2005, it was passed by the people, so it's it's voters' desire to have a village or to have a mixed-use-two. And it says it is designed to accommodate a variety of residential, retail, institutional, recreational, service uses, integrated and planned in a village-like setting. And one of the requirements is it must have city water and storage, which that property does. And there aren't that many properties left of that size that have city water and storage. So if we wanted to do something like this and make it so we could have, you know, assisted living, workforce housing, some, a few small businesses within a setting like this, this is an opportunity. I put it out there because if, I don't get warm feeling, I don't want to move forward with it because it's expensive to start to go in that direction. But if it's something that you think that's what the people have voted for, and you think that that's something that the town meeting may get approved, and you think it's a good idea as the town fathers and mothers of the, I'd still like to put it out to you.
Grandfathers.
Grandfathers.
Yes. My personal feeling is it fits in with the neighborhood structure of the town. It's got, you know, maybe a little store down at the bottom of the hill or whatever, and workforce housing is in short supply. Assisted living is, quite frankly, in short supply. My first inclination is to say, that sounds like a good idea, but without seeing what you are proposing, I have to have some reservations.
Understand.
You know, but I like the concept and your other buildings and properties, you've taken care of them.
Thank you.
I have no reason to believe this wouldn't be like that.
You know, we have the golf course on one side, we have an industrial park on the other side, there's some conservation land on another side. You know, with 50 acres there, we'd set aside, you have to have a green space, we'd do conservation of 20 acres for walking trails, things like that. It lends itself to this, but again, do we have the support in the town that wants to have it?
Go ahead, Catherine.
The mixed-use-two, if I'm remembering correctly, was created to accommodate the, yep, property off of Mansville.
Correct.
Which is a huge piece of property.
It's 105 acres, yeah.
I think there's three lots, if not four.
It got broken up now. I think there's actually two. One, it's owned by different people now, it got kind of broken up. One owns eight to 10 acres, and I think the rest is owned by one gentleman who owns 100. There's a brown site, too, if I remember correctly.
Oh, it's an asbestos site.
Yeah, it is.
It's a little bit. Very large asbestos site, but nevertheless, and and I'm looking at the map. I mean, it is a vote of town meeting. It does, the selectmen aren't, don't really have any influence there.
You know, I'm gonna give you a quick story, and it's about my son who moved out of my house in the last four or five months, and we looked for apartments for him, and we looked everywhere. And we ended up finding one in Nashua, believe it or not. He works online, he can work anywhere he wants to. And the reason why he picked this one in Nashua, because it had garden spots with it. He's a gardener, believe it. For whatever reason, that's what he loves to do, he loves to garden. So these units had, set aside here, as forgotten. We looked around at some of them in here, and there is really not much housing here. And a lot of the housing that we have here is functionally obsolete, it's not really designed for today's start living. So, look, this project is bigger than just me alone. It's gonna take a lot of effort, but I think it may really enhance the town. So that's the position I'm coming from.
I absolutely loved the idea of assisted living. Until the PBD expanded, our seniors had to move to Dover, Portsmouth, Rochester in order to get housing for assisted living. And I understand, from what I understand, PBD's filling up really quickly. And there are no spots close around in the conquered Manchester area now for housing, and they're moving up here now.
Right.
And they're taking those assisted living over here. So workforce living, apartments, absolutely. You cannot find apartments anywhere.
Right, and I want to talk about these apartments. We're not talking about subsidized apartments, we're talking about people that are the nurses, the people that work in the restaurants around here. I mean, everybody's complaining that they have nobody to go to work. And one of the reasons they don't is there's no place for them to live. They've been squeezed out, prices have gone up so high. And, you know, this site as it is stands now could be developed into houses, you know, and they'll all be 500,000 plus again, but I don't really think that that is really a benefit to us. It doesn't really help the workforce, it doesn't help assisted living. It's just gonna add more burden to us, really. We were looking at the statistics when we went around and looked at all these apartments. The professionals that are looking for apartments now are mostly aged from 23 to 35. When they start to have kids, they move out and they get houses. So I know there's always a concern that we're gonna overload the school system or something like that if we bring it in, but I don't really think that if we set it up properly, I don't really think that that would be the biggest issue. So I just wanted to speak to that.
Go ahead, John.
Did you consider going to ZBA for getting this permission to do something like that on this piece of property so it wouldn't change the whole section, but just yours individual?
I hadn't considered that, and that's a possibility, but because it's on the books of the mixed-use-two, I almost think that that is a better way of handling it. You can just designate this one particular piece of property for the mixed-use-two. It sits out there, but we obviously could go to, but you'd have to prove hardship, and I don't know if you can prove hardship to that, yeah. But it's more of a zoning issue. You know, the zoning in town is liberal and open in some sense, and it's restrictive in other senses. And to make it a village-like setting is what was voted for in 2005. But there's no land has been put into it yet. It sits out there, as you have a zoning for it, but you have no land. And it has to have city water and storage, too, which, that's, you know, it's another thing that gets restrictive.
I don't have the benefit of the zoning ordinance in front of me, but you seem to be emphasizing housing. Doesn't resort commercial allow housing?
Yes, you can. You could do housing, but you couldn't do a facility like assisted living in that zone, as far as I'm concerned. When I read the zoning, you're only allowed to have two dwellings on lawn unless you put a road in, and then you have to have, the best move you could make would be what they call a cluster development, which allows you to go down from 150 feet of road frontage down to 100 feet of frontage. And with city and storage, it allows you to go down from an acre of land down to, actually, it comes back to you, the selectmen, I believe, is you're allowed to go down to 10,000 square feet per lot with the selectman approval. I believe it is a selectman, too, if I remember correctly. Or without that, it's 15,000 square foot lots. So that type of assisted living is not really gonna, it's not gonna benefit. I mean, you're not gonna go do 10 houses for assisted living and 20 houses for workforce housing. It's not, it's cost prohibitive. It doesn't really make sense. In the mixed-use-two zone, it would be more open to that.
Funny, mixed-use-two isn't listed in this
Table of Dimensions?
Chart of Committed Uses.
Yeah, right. It's on Article 4, Establishment of Districts.
Yeah, I remember when it was established. But it's not listed in our chart of permitted uses. Isn't that interesting?
Got it.
So, John, I'm somewhat in, I'm in line with what Joe said as well. I do think there's a need for both in the area, having a son at the age of 21 who, you know, trying to look for an apartment, being a remote worker. Yeah, it's, I know I'm preaching to the choir on that one. Concerns, obviously, though I know from prior conversations with you about your care about the land and conservation, I think that that would be handled. The other piece, I think, that we always have to look at on that piece of road is traffic. And how is that gonna affect traffic pattern with more people in and out, et cetera?
Absolutely.
You know, and I will say, having lived in the town now for 24 years, I think in addition, like this, a community situation in that section of town would actually be, would actually not be a bad thing overall. And I think we also, we, all municipalities are gonna have to grapple with, at the state level, they're gonna mandate that workforce housing be accepted by all municipalities, that municipalities aren't gonna be able to hold that back very soon, so. But with Joe, I would want to see what the plans look like going out, you know, considerations about traffic and traffic pattern as well, which I think probably the DOT would want to take a look at, too.
They're all over that, yeah.
Yeah.
So as far as traffic is concerned, right now, we have, you have to have a minimum of 400 feet, and I had to have it surveyed, and then they go out and they do lasers, and they determine exactly what it is. We ended up with 405 feet. So we're okay by five feet, but actually, we would make a different entrance farther down. So we've taken all that into consideration. I pull out of that every day, I work on that site every day, and when I pull out, I do not like turning towards Laconia. If you go up a hill and, you know, I'm right now on gravel, so when I start off, it's slow because I spin a little bit. If I paved it, it might be a little bit better, but we have the ability to move it down almost 300 feet. So it'd be directly across Manville Road, so that would create an intersection. And when I've talked to the state about it, they, that's what they're in favor of.
On the, on the house site next to Truck Trends?
Not that, almost.
Almost.
It's almost, but you're right, you're right there. You gotta go two more houses over, and that's where Manville Road is.
Okay, yeah.
Yep.
Got it. Okay.
Yeah, I've, you know, when I look at a project, I'm the guy who thinks about it day and night and sleeps on it and looks at it, and, I mean, we could use a driveway, but I prefer not to, so we've taken that into consideration. But again, that comes with an expense, and it comes with a lot more planning. And to do other uses that are lower impact, you probably wouldn't require it. Believe it or not, housing doesn't create that much traffic. What really creates a lot of traffic is a convenience store. I just went through that with the state. I paid $8,000 for traffic studies and went through the whole process, and when I came back, they said, oh, no, your trip generation is gonna be crazy. And I was like, how can this be? I'm not even gonna have gas pumps, it's just a convenience store, you know, you get your cigarettes and your beers, and you buy a lottery ticket, that's the type of community store. They had the trip generations so high up that they were requiring me to widen both sides of the road, and really just almost got too expensive for me to do that, so. But I'm aware of it, and I just did a traffic study in that area on Manville Road, is one of the places we did the traffic. I don't need to take up too much of your time, I just wanted to get a temperature, and I think I've achieved that.
You, I was just gonna ask.
Yeah.
You got a sense of it, right?
I'm good, and I know you guys could, the clock doesn't move.
Time stands still at the selectmen's meeting.
Yeah, you're absolutely right.
Boy.
All right, you're welcome, John. Okay, next, Catherine, you wanted to be on the agenda for the Civil War.
Well, not necessarily me, but I thought it was a discussion we all should have, rather, that's why I said put it on the agenda. And I wanted everybody to have a chance to think about it. At the Park Commissioners Meeting, we had Nathan Langione come to the meeting, and he had some great ideas about the fence, and I just, he reminded me, it's probably time that we do something about the fence. In fact, Kathy Mitchell found a document from town meeting that requires us to maintain that fence. The section that is abutting, I think it's 8 Winter Street is his property, but Nathan's property, is probably the worst section of fence. It's also pretty hidden. And it might be a good place to start. This has been talked about years ago. I don't know if you remember, Joe, you remember.
I remember it.
We couldn't, when we had that accident, we couldn't find, excuse me, matching fence. We found some reasonable facsimiles, things that were close, but not matching. And perhaps it's what we should do, is find a reasonable facsimile and replace that western section and start there, and then take those pieces and use them to replace and repair what we can see.
Existing, right. Sounds like a good idea.
Well, it's not my good idea, it was Nathan's. That was a very good idea. So I thought we should have that discussion because it's gonna be costly. And we should find out what it's gonna cost. Pick a fence and set some money aside. I don't know how much Public Works can do. I sent an email out to our Public Works Director. Have not heard back from him, but he had Amnesty Week, so I completely understand that. I don't know if it's something that his crew would be willing to take on to remove and replace. I don't know if they have time. I'm sure they have the capability. Kevin seems to be able to do just about anything. But I don't know if they have the time. But I think we should begin the process of replacing and repairing.
Wait a minute. Jeannie, go ahead.
I did ask Kevin if that was something that he could repair, and he said he didn't, he couldn't. So I'm happy to, there appears to be only really one fence company in town these days, and I would, I could have Superior Fence look at it. If that's what you'd like.
I could see what it costs.
Wait, where did we get? Go ahead, John.
I could probably answer your question. So I found the copies of the original bids for that, when that car plowed through the section and flattened it. And I can't remember if it was 700 or 1,700 dollars, I don't know.
It could be more now.
Yeah, and then the Public Works fixed it themselves for us. But the west end, you're meaning the whole side that abuts, Nathan? There's many pieces missing, it's grown into trees, there's definitely salvageable parts that could be, you know, saved and used for other sections. But, yeah, that's.
But didn't we get a quote for that back pot when we went out for that front, for the side pot? It was something like 10,000 dollars?
Wasn't included with it. It was not long after that when the, well, no. I think it was about five years ago when a plow struck it. I got all the pictures of that.
Something reminds me of 10,000 dollars for a quote for that.
The, we have the mold and everything for those posts still, which is fortunate, and the parts, so. You know, like Jeannie said, get a reasonable facsimile of it. And it will probably end up being landscaped around it, such a way to block off the house anyway.
Yeah.
If I remember correctly, it was the decorative post that you couldn't match, but the rest of the fence you could.
The rest you could, right.
And of course, we don't want cast iron, probably cast aluminum.
Right. Glad, Jeannie.
Is that, is that fence historical at all?
Is it what?
Historical. I don't know how old it is. Is the fence historical? I'm just, I'm just thinking there might be grant money out there, but I don't know anything about the fence.
The fence has to be historical. It's been, it's way, 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 way before.
It's definitely.
And it's listed in the original deed that that fence should be maintained, so I think I've got a copy.
100 years old. Gotta be.
But how, how many, did you say? About 100?
100.
About 100 years old? That's historical.
Easy.
I'm getting to be historical, so that has to be.
I think it's about 120, 130.
Good thing.
Okay, so we got enough to go on, or to fix?
Well, what I will do is look, I'll check to see if there's any funding out there for something like that, and then I'll contact the people at Superior Fence and ask them to take a look at it. I can ask Kevin again, but the last time we had this discussion, a few months ago, this came up, and I had a conversation with him about, did he think he could fix that? He went out and looked at it, and he came back and he said he didn't think that he had the capacity, the capability.
So now it's different from fixing it. It's taking the back one off, replacing it with a facsimile, and then keeping those pots and repair, using those pots to use to fix the other pieces. So that's a little bit different than repairing. If you look at the back pot, I would refuse to repair it myself. You can't repair it.
Not economically.
So he might want to take another look at it, and could he take it safely apart and reuse those pieces to maybe as pots to the other three, other two sides, because it's three-sided, right?
I suspect from looking at it, and, you know, the roots have grown into it and trees, as John has said, it's a big job.
Yeah.
It's time-consuming. I'm sure that Public Works has the capacity to do it. I don't think they have the time.
Right.
I think we have a tendency to forget that they have
Right, exactly.
Roads and
Yep.
everything else they do, but it is a huge job, I think, undertaking.
What did the Parks Commission come up with, with the tree or bush, or whatever you want to call it, that's growing there? Did they make any decision on that? Trimming it down, or?
So there is a tree that's a boundary, well, I don't even know if it's a boundary tree, I believe it's mostly on the 8 Winter Street property, so that's up to the property owner. The, I'm gonna call it pine or evergreen, huge giant shrub.
Grown you.
They're going, just, you know, trim it back. They don't want to remove it, or, you know, trim it so much to lose it, but we'll, we'll trim it back. There is a plaque at the base of it. I believe it's Belle PBD Brown.
Oh.
So they're gonna try to get it trimmed back, and Paul Rushler does that work for the parks, so.
Okay. Go ahead, Scott.
So in just thinking about this, the section of the fence that borders the 8 Winter Street piece, the pieces, the section that we have to have repaired, and I know from hearing John say it, that we, you know, we're bound to maintain the fence. Just a thought, is, are there sections of that fence that border 8 Winter Street that we could repurpose to repair the damaged section, and then work with the property owner for a different boundary on the Winter Street property, you know?
Different boundary?
Meaning, like, I mean, a set of bushes or something like that, if, you know, if we know that that fence is growing into plants, et cetera, et cetera. It's only going to get worse, I think.
I think you'll find Nathan is very amenable to working with us.
But you.
Remove bushes, replace bushes, trim trees, and remove that fence. He, I'm sure he's willing heartedly to work with us.
But just thinking about in terms of cost, if there are sections there that we might remove and then be able to replace the damaged section with that piece.
And I'm sure he's fine.
Okay, just, just trying to think in terms of moderation with our, with spending and things like that right now. So we might be able to repurpose something in there.
Okay, all done with that discussion? Okay, great. We'll move along to the Town Administrator's Report.
Did everyone get a copy of, you should have gotten an electronic copy?
Yes.
And I, there's a copy in your packet. In that same, in the same section, I put all the backup documents that I refer to in my, all the ones that you don't have in my, next to my report. So the first item under the action is Brian Colburn from McFarland Johnson asked to meet with the board. He reviewed the meeting videos of September 7, 21, and October 5, and he believes that he can address the board's concerns, and he also suggests that the DOT attend the same meeting. He felt like maybe he didn't explain things well enough in the email he said, sent to me. And Kevin was involved in all the meetings that we had with Brian, so I think maybe he just didn't make it clear. Kevin would be involved, he said, in the project. And they would do the work that was required. So that's his ask to the board, is if you would be willing to meet with him. And Kevin Russell, I imagine it would be from DOT, so you have the DOT there, you can ask them questions, you can ask Brian questions, and then decide if you just want to drop it, or if you want to pursue it.
Yep, I do. John?
Well, I think just the way the whole thing was written, we didn't agree with it, and to have him come and verbally discuss it, I think he should have a different proposal on how he's gonna address it or prepare, because we couldn't really make a decision, it's just.
Maybe we should discuss it, and then he could change the written proposal.
That would make sense.
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay.
That would make more sense, I think. Okay, anybody else? Okay, everybody, yep, sounds like a plan.
Next item, Casella, as you know, Casella bought Panard. And at the last meeting, you got a copy of the assignment and assumption of contract, and he had wanted the board to sign it. I think I also put a copy of the current contract, I did, I put a current, a copy of the current contract in your binder, and I think the board wanted to wait so they could review the information and also give Selectmen Scanlon an opportunity to not only review it, but weigh in on the documents. So I am asking, what would the board like to do?
Sign it.
I have a couple of things.
All right, go ahead.
I'm just gonna say, I spent Columbus Day weekend with Tony from Panard, excuse me, Casella. The only thing that changes, he told me, is because they have to follow the contract the way it's written right now. Nothing changes, not a thing. And Tony said he would hold them to it. And that's pretty much the whole thing with this. There's no renegotiating at this point, or any of that kind of stuff. That paper is just our acknowledgement that the contract has indeed been assigned to Casella. Casella bought it. So that's, that's our notification that that occurred. I'm not sure when the contract is up for renewal, but that's a whole separate issue from this.
27.
Well, we get the exact same thing that's in the contract, nothing is changing.
Until 27. Until twenty seven.
So I can't find in here an escape clause for the town.
A what?
So if, if we want to be out of this contract, we don't like the service, we have problems with the service, the only thing I could find is if town meeting doesn't fund it.
Tim, do you recall? I, I don't think that there is, but the contract was signed, so.
What is it?
I don't think that there was.
Yeah, that was the, what you see there is the non-appropriation clause.
Yep.
Uh, if it's not funded, um, I'd have to look at the agreement. I think there was a, another provision in there.
I have it right here.
Well, it is. It's on page nine, but it's very specific. It is extremely specific. Failure to maintain the records required here under to commit access there to failure in the performance of any of its remaining obligations here under or default in any of the other covenants and conditions of this agreement. So it seemed to be, and I didn't have the benefit of talking to Tim about it. I didn't have the opportunity. Do you see what I'm talking about at the top of page nine? Is that enough to allow us, if we don't like the services, to terminate this contract?
Wouldn't that be also covered on page eight under standards of performance? If the contractor fails to collect materials herein specified for a period in excess of two days, consecutive scheduled working days, or fails as determined by the town to operate in accordance with the terms and conditions of this agreement and the applicable ordinances for the same, the town has the option to hire another contractor. And any and all operating expenses incurred by the town in doing so may be deducted from the town compensation due to the contractor hereunder.
But it's so specific. We have the, we can hire another contractor. It doesn't say we can just get out of the contract and do whatever we decide to do there. And after, we have to hire another contractor. You know what I mean?
Yeah, but then I think if you look at the next paragraph, Catherine, yes, we would have to assume that, that we would have to assume costs to hire another contractor, but then it says, if the contractor is unable for any cause to resume performance at the end of thirty calendar days, all liability of the town under this agreement to the contractor shall cease and the town shall be free to negotiate with other contractors for the operation of a resident, residential curbside solid waste collection service.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And then my main question was, when this contract was signed, and I'm sorry, I'm playing catch up here, I know, but when this contract was signed, we weren't creating a, um, recycling center. So I assume these prices were based on tonnage. And then knowing we were not going to pick up curbside recycling, that tonnage would be added to the household waste. So I'm assuming that tonnage is going to decrease because of our recycling center, or at least I hope it is. And that's not, I assume that's not calculated into these prices for year one, two, three, four and five.
No, and that's, that's because, uh, the service that they're providing is the collection only. So we, we pay for the tipping fees, um, for the, uh, for, you know, what's collected. So, you know, they still have to, whether somebody's got one bag in their bin or, you know, fifty bags in their bin, they still got to stop at that location, pick up next location, pick up so on and so forth. So it's based on the, the tips that they do.
So it's based on the number of stops they make?
That's originally, I think that's what, how they price.
That's how it, that's how it is. They go to the, to the place and they weigh the trucks and then they bill us accordingly.
This, the savings that we'll realize from, uh, offsetting solid waste, um, tipping fees through the recycling center would be a reduction in the cost that we have on a monthly basis at Wheelie Brader. You know, once we're really up and running. And, uh, and the offsetting revenues that we may receive from the sale of recycled products.
I tried to look at the, um, annual reports to see what we had paid for, um, curbside, the recycling and the household waste, and it was really hard to.
It was a lot. It was about two hundred and sixty thousand in prior, um, prior budgets.
If you combine them together, yeah.
Yep.
But then as you took out the curbside pickups.
Right. And in a, in our current, um, in the last, uh, annual report, you'll see under recycling collection, there's a zero under the budget, uh, category for twenty-three because, uh, that ended, uh, for this calendar year. So that's where, that's where that savings was realized in the, uh, you know, the absence of that budget. And I think it was about a hundred and, I want to say about a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty thousand that was in the budget in twenty-two.
Are you comfortable with these prices that they've?
Oh, absolutely. I think they're actually, uh, very reasonable when you look at, uh, the trends in the market. And, uh, we went through a, I can tell you, we went through a very, um, extensive process with, uh, two vendors, um, looking at all kinds of language regarding inflation and, um, all sorts of things. So, um, so I, I feel so that's, that's very fair. Uh, and just to remind the board too, that, uh, when Bestway was originally bought by Casella, uh, you went through the same process of, um, signing the assignment, uh, back in whatever year that was, two thousand and seven or eight.
We don't have any other options out there, really. Unless we collect it on our own.
Right, and we, and we did, uh, the board did a review, uh, figures that we had put together for having our own service. Their pros and cons, but the savings wasn't, uh, overwhelming compared to the risk that you take on, um, with having that service.
Or if we decide not to do a curbside, let people figure out how to get rid of their own trash.
Go ahead, Joe.
I might point out that although this conversation is fascinating and well worth having at another time, that has nothing to do with that piece of paper. That piece of paper is merely our acknowledgement of our contract being assigned to somebody else. That's all it is. We can't renegotiate any more than we could with Panard. I was saying, oh, we're going to renegotiate now. It's not the way things work.
It's not what it says.
That's what it is.
But that's not what this says. This says, we agree to assign that contract to another contractor.
Mm-hmm.
That's what it says.
That's correct.
So if we don't sign it, then we're not agreeing.
Yeah, well, I don't even want to go there. Thank you. We had exhaustive contract hunt and negotiations with multiple companies and, uh, we got the very best deal that we could get based on the conditions at the time. Um, that's not just a, a haphazard document. And okay, well, I agree, I for one, and you could disagree. And we'll see where it goes.
No, I'm comfortable. I have to speak here with Tim. He's assuaged the concerns I have.
Okay. Anyone else? All set?
Okay. While you're signing that, the, um, next action item again has to do with Panard Waste or Casella. Uh, Tony had asked if the board would consent to allow the garbage truck to enter onto Morrison Avenue where it says do not enter from the road. And the board had directed, well, a couple of things. One, they wanted to wait for John because, uh, they wanted him to weigh in. And two, they asked me to check, you asked me to check with, um, the chief. And I did, and he, um, spelled out his concerns in an email. I forwarded that to Tony and Tony said he could, um, he could work with how, you know, what the chief's concerns were in terms of coming in and out of that road. So essentially, I think it is, um, he comes in the, in, into Morrison Avenue from Route Three, uh, picks up the garbage and, um, or may, one, he, the, the bottom line is he won't cross traffic like if he's coming out of Morrison and turning left. He wouldn't cross that traffic. I think that was the chief's concern.
So he'd go in from the, the east entrance, so to speak, the one closest to Planet Honda, come down and then loop back up and then come back out.
Right. And, um, and to help facilitate that, he wanted to have a sign that said something to the effect, only town authorized vehicles enter this way. And that would be their truck. And Kevin, uh, said that that would be a sign we could get made from the Department of Corrections, so. So does the board want to grant that to Panard, Casella, Tony?
Yep. I'll go ahead, John.
Just want to clarify. So that would be so they would enter, um, only if they're coming from the west end of town heading east.
Yes.
Yeah, so only a right-hand turn would be made.
Right.
And that's what he meant, yeah.
Right.
And that's, that was the original concern was it's so wide there and over a hill that somebody turning that direction.
Yes, and I, I agree to go to the Department of Corrections for the sign. Anyone else?
I'm a yes.
Yes. Scott? Yes, John? Yep. Okay. Next.
Good. Next. Administrative assistant and job, or excuse me, administrative assistant and secretary job descriptions, were given to the board a, um, few meetings back. Didn't know if you were ready to review them, discuss them, approve them.
Anyone?
Are we doing those at the same time?
I'm not. I didn't even read them. I'm sorry, but.
Want to put it off? That, what you'd like to do is just push it off?
Me personally, but if the others already agree on it, I'm fine with them going ahead with it. What do you want to do, board? I'm okay with it.
I'm okay with it.
All right.
Yeah, I've been, I'm okay with it.
You are, you are, okay.
No, I have a couple of questions.
All right.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
For the executive assistant one.
Uh, we don't have an executive assistant. You must have an old copy. We have an administrative assistant and a secretary now.
Is it just the name that changed?
Uh, pretty much, yes. I would say yes, right, Tim? It was just the name.
But the, so the job description is the same?
Yes.
Okay. So on page two, it says, this is just as the P sign warrants for police department officers and detectives. Can we add and re- and residents?
Sure.
So this is on the supervision received. She works under the general supervision of the town administrator and specific supervision of the finance directive, director relative to finance activities, blah, 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 blah. And then on this page three, it says, assist finance director with accounts receivable, blah, blah, blah. My question is, to what extent? So who decides how many hours are spent with the finance director, the finance director or the town administrator?
Well, s- speaking for the current town administrator and the current finance director, I think we would work together on that. I think, um, we pretty much do that now, and I would think that we would do that in the future. What? Twenty, what?
We've figured it out.
Okay.
Oh, he's already vying for twenty hours. I heard him.
Well, I just think that sometimes there would be more need in one place than the other.
Right, well, for, for example, so we, we've been discussing, uh, when the new person comes in. Um, we had this discussion this morning and, uh, Tim was concerned that we really needed to get her up to speed on payroll, um, so that she could, um, be his backup when he needed that. And so we agreed that when she comes on, when she starts, he's going to spend more time with her upfront to get her ready for, um, handling payroll.
Would that be based on, um, what she brings to the table, what she currently knows? Might that be less than expected? Or if she knows.
It, it may be, and that, and that's exactly the conversation we had. And Tim, jump in if you want, i- is he, he wants to, go ahead. I'll let you speak.
Well, um, I mean, we discussed a couple of different things to start with. Uh, but by starting in the finance area, we'll be able to also see very quickly, um, you know, how much additional, how much training is going to be required based on, uh, you know, getting in, into the product and, uh, into the concepts. And, uh, you know, I think there's a good basis there, but, um, there's going to be new things that, um, she will deal with in our environment that she may not have in another environment. And so, uh, probably within the first week or two, I'll be able to have a really good assessment as to how much additional time it's going to take for her to get up and running on some of the financial, uh, things.
But I would guess, and we haven't had this conversation yet, but I would guess the split would be somewhere once she's all assimilated, it would be fifteen hours with, um, finance and the remainder with the Sleckman's office.
Yeah, I would think it'd be like a sixty, forty split, um, at some point.
And then on page four, it says adds and removes documents from the current forms, ordinances, policies database, feeds various website pages. Would that be at the direction of the town administrator?
That would be a combination of Tim and I. Again, we look, we'll work collaboratively. And it would also be the Sleckman, um, who would, you know, I, I think we, this question came up before about what gets removed and what gets added. And I, I think that the board weighs in on the removal part of it.
Okay. I was just more concerned that it wasn't, um, the administrative assistant's decision.
No, it's not. It, it never has been.
Okay. Great. I'm good. Thank you.
Okay.
So these are good to print out, uh, for you to sign?
Need a motion?
Uh, wh- what I can do is I'll print out originals and bring them to the next meeting.
Okay.
And then sign it then.
Perfect.
Yeah, because you're going to add to that.
Yes, I have that one, and residents. Correct? That was it.
Mm-hmm.
Next, um, I had attended the, uh, I, ICMA annual conference a couple of weeks ago. So very, um, it was definitely worthwhile. You may or may not know that I got a scholarship to attend, so it wasn't any kind of cost to the town other than I wasn't in my seat, but I was working while I was there. And one of the thing, one of the benefits that came out of that was this, um, workshop on short-term rentals. And I put a copy in your file and I thought, uh, the board may be interested in seeing a demonstration. I, they gave me a demonstration, which I thought was very interesting. They pulled up Tilton. They showed me how many short-term rentals, where they were at and what the revenue was being generated in the town. And, uh, and then they have a platform, a software platform where, they make it easier, easier on the town in terms of uh, uh, permit applications, um, kind of regulation and all that. And so I think they gave me a quote of like three thousand dollars annually to run the platform, if that was something you wanted to do, and that would be. that would be, you would see the revenues generated from that paying, paying back that annual fee. But I just thought it was very interesting. I, I was interested to see that they knew exactly, you know, what we had in Tilton, um, and what kind of revenue it was generating. So.
Is this something that needs to be passed at town meeting? Not the, not the, the expense of $3,000, but, um.
Yeah, yeah. This has to go to planning board and they would have to, you know, submit, submit some kind of.
A new zoning.
Right.
Right. Okay.
So it's just right in the beginning stages of it. I, I, I just thought it was very timely because we've been having that discussion here.
Right. Absolutely.
And, um, again, I, I put that, um, the copy of this in your.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
If you want to look at it.
Look forward to reading that.
Renewal rates for calendar year 2024 have been set by Health Trust. Uh, you saw the increases. Uh, hypothesized, I don't know if that's the right word, but back when we were in COVID, uh, if you remember, our rates dropped and the, now they're increasing. And the belief is that during COVID, people were not getting care. They were not going to the hospital. They were avoiding doctors or they couldn't get doctor's appointments. And once we got past COVID, then everybody started going back to the doctors and things that perhaps they might've caught had they been going to the doctors or the hospital, uh, they're now catching, might've been further along. Um, and claims are up. So those are the rates that you see. I also included in your pack at a copy of the dashboard so you could see how it's being used, uh, by your employees, which I thought was kind of interesting. And what I'm looking for from the board is approval to move forward with the new rates so that I can start open enrollment.
Every, don't, everyone answer it once.
There's no real options to this, is there?
No.
Yes.
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 Okay. Thank you. So I'm going to be working on that tomorrow and my goal is to start open enrollment on Monday and it will be open for a month to give people an opportunity to sign up. I included in your packet a proposal from Twin Rivers Cleaning Services. It is a 10% increase from the last contract. And I believe, I did send you an electronic version. I know Tim has been talking back and forth with Tina and I know he has some ideas on ways that we might reduce that. I don't know if you want to speak to that, Tim?
I have a question.
Yes.
The contract before this one, wasn't it a 10% increase as well?
Originally it was more than.
Yes, we.
But we ended up with the 10%?
Right.
Because.
10% and now 10%.
Yep.
So, um, also, uh, the math is wrong for Riverfront Park. It's, um, the, it's a little bit less. The overall agreement would be about, um, $600 or four, no, $500 less than what she's got there quoted, uh, because of the number of cleanings. She just had a mathematical, mathematical error. But one of the things that, that I've wondered about for some time, having worked in town hall, uh, for a long time, as you know, is that, um, we clean on Wednesdays and Fridays in the morning here. So, um, you know, during the winter time, I get it, you know, there's more traffic, you know, that, that needs to be cleaned up. There's salt, sand, that sort of thing. But for the rest of the year, I've often wondered if we just don't need one cleaning a week. And if we were to do that, um, she had, cause I, I asked, you know, uh, if we were to cut back the number of cleanings, you know, would that affect the number of hours spent? And she recommended for the town hall, if we went to say three months of twice a week. So basically the winter months twice a week and then nine months out of the year, once a week, we'd save about $2,000. And, um, were we to do something similar over the PD going from, uh, three times a week to two times a week, but, uh, increasing it from two and a half hours per visit to three hours per visit at the PD, it would save about $4,000. And, um, and here, uh, we would also increase from one and a, uh, a half an hour a week. Uh, so even though you're cutting down the, the number of visits, there'd be slightly more time. So there are ways of reducing the overall cost. It just depends on, you know, uh, I mean, there, there have been some issues that, uh, with the Parks Commission at Riverfront Park, uh, they've budgeted $1,900 in their budget for the year. And yet, uh, the cost of, the cost of budgeting for Riverfront Park in this contract is $3,900. So, uh, so I did send something off to, um, the Parks Commission regarding, uh, are you wanting to, you know, contract your own? Do you want to add more money to your budget, uh, to account for this contract or some other, some other option? Uh, so, so any of that, um, those are some of the thoughts on it.
Is there a reason why we need to do three, I'm, I'm just, give me my own information. I'm not saying yes, no, maybe that we need to do three times a week at the PD?
It depends who you ask. Uh, there are high traffic areas that need cleaning more frequently and there, there are areas that are very infrequently needed. Um, and those were already worked into the existing agreement. Um, if you were to ask the people that deal directly with the cleaners over there, I think they would say that, uh, it is important. Uh, but keep in mind that, um, uh, that the, the highest traffic area is going to be down by the squad room, um, and, um, over in booking, the squad room area, um, the kit room, all that, um, uh, you know, their break room, that sort of area. So there's, there's certain areas that are going to get a lot more attention. Of course, then you also have the EOC and the lobby that the public would see, um, more frequently. And so, um, I think, I personally think that, um, you know, it's something worth looking at and talking to the chief about. Uh, but I just wanted to understand, you know, how their prices would change, uh, if we were to make adjustments to the existing schedules. And I'm, I'm much more familiar with the situation we have here in town hall, um, than I am over at the PD.
How, how many years have we had this contract?
This is second year, isn't it? Before that, we had a different cleaner.
I think we had, this is our third, I think. Yeah. I think it's our third year.
Would it be wise to go out to contract or no? To see what, what is out there? Just asking. Go ahead, John.
No, I, I think it's a good idea to go out for it. I don't know if, you know, we would consider, I know we did have a while ago, possibly a part-time person to do some of the cleaning, some of the areas. Cause if we look at the total cost per week for all these and what we're getting, it's, it's pretty substantial.
Right.
And, you know, a part-time person, because of the hours, uh, cumulative of hours over the week, it could be done under the 40, I think it, you know, 37 or so. Um, there's also other options. Um, you know, um, the EOC room, things like that. May laugh, but Rumba, robot vacuuming, run through the hall every night, one o'clock in the morning, goes and does it. I, I use one at home and, uh, it, it works quite well and empties itself. And, uh, you know, it's, cause that's one of the major costs right there is the hours for vacuuming every inch of the hall. It doesn't have to be run by a person.
The other, the other aspect with the EOC is that as groups, uh, use that and reserve it, um, you know, there could be a fee, uh, for cleaning and/or setup or something. Now, I know that we often benefit from having a seat, uh, in those classes that are held for law enforcement. So they come in to use the facility, we get a free, uh, seat. So there's a value there, but, um, uh, but there are, there are a number of different options. I, I just worry that, uh, when Jeannie and I have discussed, um, going out to bid on certain things, that, uh, the timing is, it could be difficult. And also just the bandwidth, uh, to be able to get things done. It's, it's been incredibly challenging. Um, I can tell you, I haven't been able to get to half the things I need to get to, um, because we're doing things that we're hoping that, uh, this person starting Monday is going to be able to start picking up. So, uh, so there's not a lot of, um, you know, not a lot of bandwidth there right now. Is that correct, Jeannie? Would you say?
Correct. Yes.
Yeah. And how? So.
What's the total monthly cost for altogether? I was going through it. It seemed.
Right on the last page, John.
28, 61.
28, 61, 60 a month.
$2,861 for working still at the part-time job.
Right. And we're paying about 2570 right now, roughly. Uh, like I said, if we went, um, if we went to a schedule of three months out of the year, uh, twice a week here and then, uh, nine months once a week, but with an extra half hour of cleaning, we'd save 1,900 and change. And at the PD, going from three to two, but increasing the hours of those two visits, we'd save about $4,000.
For a month or a year?
No, for the year.
Yeah.
Yeah. So a total of, um, just under $6,000, uh, over the total cost of the agreement. So 500 a month. So it'd be less than what we're paying now. But it would require reduction in service.
$3,800 a month is a lot for.
28.
Or 28, I'm sorry. $2,800.
715 a week. So it doesn't pay to hire somebody like an employee.
Part-time?
Even part-time. It's, there's things like matching taxes and workman's comp and those things on top of, if you gave the employee 715 a week. Uh, is what 25% above that?
No.
20% above that?
Uh, no, it wouldn't be that much for a part-time. Uh, it'd be about 8%.
8% above that?
Mm-hmm.
Even so, that's an extra 60 bucks a, a, a week right there. But now you're up close to 800 bucks a week.
By, by 32 hours? I don't have my calculation.
That's a decent wage.
22 bucks an hour.
How about our liability for that?
Well, we did, we did have a part-time employee in 2011. Um, and there were some, we had some difficulties during that time. Um, there were issue, quality issues, reliability issues, um, you know, things of that sort. Um, so, I mean, we, we had done that at one point, but it was, uh, very limited. It wasn't very long period of time, I don't think.
It didn't work.
It didn't work.
It really didn't. Not with that particular employee.
Right.
And you might get lucky. You might get lucky and find the perfect person, but I'm not that lucky.
Right. Okay.
I'd like to see the numbers with the, uh, reduction in service. And they're still going to do just as good a job every time they do it. They're gonna do it less.
Well, I th- I think if you were to consider the following, if you were, um, keep the PD the same, um, and, you know, once, once the Parks Commission decides what they want to do, that either, you know, they're, you know, paying the full boat for that or getting their own. Uh, so if you keep the PD the same and then you, you reduce the town hall to that three, three month, you know, the winter versus the rest of the year, uh, cleaning schedule, I think you would get to a much more reasonable increase. I, I didn't calculate it, but I would imagine it'd be like a 4% increase over what we're looking at now.
So cleaning guys want four grand a year to clean the two bathrooms over here? What is the extent of their cleaning?
$3,900. It's 78 visits times, uh, $50.20 a visit. Um, that's how they price it.
Well, they earn that money sometimes. I've been in those bathrooms.
It's $3,915. Uh, the Parks Commission has budgeted $1,900 for the cleaning. And I know Catherine has spoken to the owner of the company regarding issues over there and, um, but I don't know, you know, so I, I did send back just once I saw this contract to the Parks Commission, asking them what they want to do, if they want to increase their budget, uh, get their own or some other option I hadn't considered.
I made, um, I made the park commissioners aware that there was an error. They were going by the expense reports they were given. And I said, well, then it's not accurate. There's something wrong because that's not what the contract is. And I forwarded, I think I forwarded, I'm not, you know, I did it through my phone. I forwarded a copy of the contract so they could see the amount. But that is the amount they thought that cost was. So they're aware that the error.
Good. Okay.
So you're still going to do some tallying for us?
Just, I, I really feel that we should get the three bids, at least post it on our website and do that. Um, it's a substantial amount. It's above the 500, whatever lowest bid amount is. So I think we should have it, uh, at least posted on our website to get some bids in there and what it is that we want.
Frankly, I'm with you, John. For $39, $40,000, even for $35, $30,000, there's other cleaning companies out there that might give us a better price, but we won't know that unless we send out an RFP.
And that's our policy.
Mm-hmm.
I, I wholeheartedly agree with you, but Tim had just made a good point. They've already started the budget process. So you're either in it or not. And if you send out an RFP, it's what, four to five weeks at least for a couple of weeks to get that back and then another couple of weeks to make a determination.
But you have time to change that. You would have time to increase or decrease that amount.
Okay.
Yeah.
Up till February, March.
For that.
February.
February, I think, like, I always use Groundhog Day as a reference, but I think it fluctuates.
Hey, and it might work out this is the best deal, but we won't know unless we, uh, get the information.
Okay. So it looks like, uh, consensus says go out to bid. Okay.
Not me. You're the contract guy, aren't you?
No, it's the town administrator.
Oh, there you go.
I don't even know what I'm going to do.
That sound you heard was the wheels of the bus driving over Jeannie.
Right.
But what are you saying, Jeannie? You don't.
We're swimming right now. We're just trying to keep a head, just our head above water right now. And I understand that, but something else is going to have to be put to the side and.
John, you want to tackle the bids?
Anything I can do to help, uh, do an RFP based on the other contract? You're going to get the other numbers anyway, so send them over to me for that other plan.
You don't need the numbers for the RFP, but you just need what the.
But it would be a different schedule.
This is what they do.
What they do.
Right on that, uh, proposal. So that would be.
Would you want to have it on two different schedules? The one that's presently on that along with the amended one?
I would compare it apples to apples. So I would take the current contract.
Right.
Just eliminate the dollars and send it out. And then we can play, let's make a deal.
Right.
With the company that.
Yep.
Gives us a little bid or that we choose.
So that it's apples to apples. You want to take a stab at it?
Yeah. Is that, um, contract available in the word or I can convert it from a PDF?
Uh, you have it in your email, I believe.
Correct. It is.
Okay.
It is there.
It's all we have.
Okay. All right, Jeannie, that's taken off of you.
Okay. Um, next item. A request again to consider allowing some employees to increase their buyout if it's needed of up to 40 additional hours. Um, concerns about staffing at town hall during the holiday and everyone trying to use their hours before year end.
We go through this every single year.
Every year.
Every year. And. And, and for me, it's fifteen years.
I'm not gonna go there.
Nah.
But I, I've always been absolutely, no, I mean, the whole idea of paid time off is so an employee goes out, takes a break from their job, their workload, and comes back refreshed, it's not a piggy bank. I'm always an adamant no with this. Time off should be spread out throughout the year. Not wait until the last minute and use it up before you lose it.
Go ahead, John.
What's the current maximum buyout?
I think it's a percentage.
Forty percent, I believe.
Forty percent. Of your, of your earned time, you can, the board increased last year the rollover from sixty to eighty. So you can roll over eighty hours now, forty percent of your earned time.
They wanna increase the buyout by thirty-three percent? From eighty to one-twenty? That's what this says.
Now, the.
Forty hours a week.
Eighty, eighty is carryover, that's not the buyout. The buyout is based off of someone's annual paid time off.
Okay, so.
So if you add two hundred and forty hours, you get forty percent of.
But not everybody is eligible for forty percent.
Correct.
That's right.
So it's only for some of the people in Town Hall. So not everybody is affected by this.
We do it for Town Hall, we gotta do it for everybody, and that opens up a whole new thing.
And it's on, only for full, full-timers, not part-timers.
Right.
And if you add forty additional hours to the forty percent that they're eligible to take, now you're only down to less than a handful of folks.
Well, what you have is, you have across departments, you have shortages in departments that have caused coverage issues, that have caused issues of people being able to take time off.
Yeah, it did happen last year, but I don't, I, I've been here five years and I don't believe, it is, it is something that's talked about every year, but I, I wanna say, and Tim, I think you could maybe remember, I think in the first two or three years of my being here, I don't think the board accommodated that, there were only one or two, which is why, you know, we look very closely about, to see who's got time, and I, I've already started sending out the emails saying, you've got too much time, you need to start planning it. But there are some people who, just by virtue, virtue of their position and short staff, are not gonna be able to hit that target.
But our short staff has only been for a couple of weeks. So in two weeks' time.
That's not true.
All right, enlighten me.
Come and spend a little time with me, because I can tell you for the last month, the last month, it's been a month, more than two weeks. And, and the work has to continue on, which it has, so the basics have gotten done. So, just saying that the short staff does affect us in Town Hall, there are people that have been sick, there have been people, but we have, we have to provide coverage and we have to get the basics done, and which we have. But we've been incredibly short-staffed over this last month.
The paid time off is supposed to be used over the course of an entire year, not the last quarter.
It's not always possible, though, I understand.
Of course it's possible.
Staffing issues.
Did we have staffing, staffing issues in January, February, March, April, May, June?
Audits? I mean, some people just can't get out the door, not the way they should. Or the work goes undone.
Well, last year was the, you know, something different, and the year before that was something different. I mean, e- e- either that, or, or we're either giving out way too much paid time off that nobody can take it, or something else has gotta change. Because at the end of the year, we go through this issue more than, I mean, every year, there's not a year that we don't come up to this issue. And I, I'm, you know, I've been a proponent of this for a lot of years, but after a while, you've convinced me that I shouldn't be, so now that I'm not. Go ahead, John.
Yeah, I think it's become, in all the years I've been here, I've been seeing a very similar trend. It's almost like it's become a, a bonus, relied on bonus that, at the end of the year. But people need to take the time off, I've lost vacation days where I've worked, and that was my choice. It's, I, I can't see. Continually extending it, because we've created that, everybody is expecting it every year.
I think there's a little bit more than meets the eye here, and I think that if you wanna further discuss, if, if I wanna say what I wanna say, it's gonna be in non-public. Otherwise, I'm not saying, because it's employees. So, I'm done discussing it. Board?
I'd rather do it on a case-by-case basis as opposed to one rule fits all, because one rule never fits all.
I'm with you on that one.
And in the past, we have made exceptions according to workloads and staffing shortages and the rest of that.
This does not fit everyone, will not fit everyone.
I know.
Is the case-by-case base, basis legal? In terms of looking at it case-by-case?
Last question.
I just, I mean.
Not equitable.
Yeah, I mean, knowing whether, just like.
That's a good question, I'll ask.
Because, I mean, I understand where, why people would wanna look at it case-by-case, but I wonder about the legal side of it, that if you're not gonna look at everyone's, then you shouldn't look at anyone's.
And it also causes morale issues.
Correct.
Favorites, or whatever it can be called, or.
But there are different jobs, and there are different responsibilities in, that permit other people that need to be on the job at certain times and that have to be here, whereas there are other people that it's nine to five, or eight to five, whatever, and out the door they go. There are other people that have to be here, absolutely have to be here, and I understand that part.
I don't think I'd wanna be in a position to say yes to some and no to some.
We've done it for fifteen years.
I was just gonna say, last year.
We have done this for fifteen years, we have said yes to some and no to some, there's exceptions, we get letters, we said, okay, yep. Last year, we did it to three.
Well, last year, seven people lost time, myself included, last year, so.
We've also made exceptions.
Each year, we have people that lose time.
And, and each year, we make exceptions to some.
So right now, we're talking about a request for up to. All of Town Hall. Well, I, I, I didn't mean to be selective to Town Hall, my wording was not correct. If you, if you want, I will ask the question about legality and then come back at the next meeting and tell you what they had to say.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna say no.
Okay.
On it.
I'm no.
I'm a maybe. You have to convince me that it's good. I know it's good on one level, but I can see a downside to it, too.
I'm with Joe.
I'm with Joe. I need, I need to know, I, I, you know, I.
So I'll, I'll find out the legality of it, and then.
Thank you.
I can take a look at who the potential employees would be. Now, and then I can bring that back to you.
Yep.
Right.
And show a cause, yep.
Can we see how many days those employees have already taken off?
That's all there, yeah.
You get that every week, I think.
Yes.
You do get those numbers, we.
Yep. So, what is not, what is not on my report, Eric, I had a couple of things at the very last that I put on so that you won't see them on the report that I gave to you. One is, we need to find a workspace for Sue McDonald, Eva is starting on Monday. So we, you know, there, there are a couple alternatives, we could put her in the, the, like, the computer room, but that's gonna be a little warm and small. We could put her in Heather's office, her file cabinets are locked, so she could, and she will, once Eva's here, she'll be here three days a week doing minutes, so she just needs a space where she's quiet, where she can have quiet and focus on the minutes. We could put her in Catherine's office. We could, what was it, we could put her out in the conference room, that's not ideal because the town clerk task collector uses that space. We really can't put her up here, out here, because, yeah, the noise, and you're listening to the tape, although, I guess she's got earplugs, too.
Yes.
Yeah, so, I did call Heather and asked her what she thought. She said she was okay with the idea of it, her being, she said she wanted to meet Sue, but she said, I, I'm okay if, if they wanna put her in that space, so.
I'm fine with that.
Whoever works conveniently.
Whatever works for you folks.
Yeah.
All right.
Yep.
Certificate of authority, so I'm working on the land and water conservation grant. I am gonna wanna have a conversation, a longer conversation with the board, maybe at the next meeting, about this project. It is a huge project. And there are a lot of different pieces to it. The land and water conservation grant being one of them, but one of the things that I need, if the board is willing to give it, I need minutes, I need to submit when I'm writing this grant. They want minutes from a governing body verifying that the individual submitting the application and/or executing the grant agreement has the proper signature authority, so.
Make a motion to grant Jeannie the authority to sign the paperwork for the grant.
Oracle's second.
What specifically is this grant for? This is the land and water conservation grant, the same one that was used for Riverfront Park, so. The one we used to build Riverfront Park? Yeah. Oh, okay, I wondered. Yep, so that, that grant is. And we're gonna use this, this grant is for what purpose? The bridge. Supposedly, we, we're going, we're applying for five hundred thousand. Now, in conjunction with that, I also filed a grant with the, with Senator Shaheen's office for a congressionally-directed spending grant, and we are in that process as well. So, but with this grant, and, you know, before the grant gets filed, you'll see it, so you know what it is. It's not something I'm just gonna do and turn in, so. But basically, what this grant is for is removal of the bridge, repair of the bridge, and replacement of the bridge back in place. If I remember, that's quite a grant package. It is a lot, and that's why, when you said, it, it's a lot.
Yeah.
My understanding was that the grant from the senator's office was, we couldn't get it? Because, is, am I misinformed?
No, we're still in that process. There, there was a.
Thought we lost?
There was a, no, there was, we're actually, there were three or four other communities were in the process, and they got bumped out. We're still moving forward. So there, there is an issue of stacking grants, but I think we'll be okay with that, at least that's what I've been told, so.
Well, yay, that's great, that was my whole thing on, on the slide, Mr. Reports, with what about the bridge?
Belmont, Belmont just got one of the grants from Senator Shaheen for the, the old school building.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Oh, yay.
Okay, we have a motion on the, on the floor. Ready to vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Great, thank you. Avatar, the 2024 update of values has increased from, from the original quote of twenty, excuse me, seventy-four thousand two hundred and eighty dollars to seventy-five thousand, seventy-five thousand six twelve, an increase of thirteen hundred and thirty-two dollars. I put a copy of the original contract in your binder, along with the October eleventh letter from Avatar advising of the increase, so if you could review that, I'm sure you're all gonna wanna look at it, and then at the next meeting, we can have a discussion about it. That works for everyone?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Also, here is a hard copy of the Bureau of Economic Affairs Planning and Zoning, book that you asked for, so that's, that'll be here.
Where are we gonna put that?
Up here somewhere, because planning and zoning is up here. Letter has been sent to the driver of the vehicle who caused that spell, Sam and Run, he has thirty days to respond. You'll see that, Slavon Constantino and I met with a gentleman from HEB. I see that she sent you all some photos from that meeting, so, and I am following up with the other three engineering firms who I've asked for, you know, to bid on this. Then, is one of those quantum? I saw that. Yeah, way back then, so no, quantum, ones you agreed to was HL Turner. There were four, and quantum wasn't, I'm certainly willing to reach out to them, have the conversation.
Had recently accidentally stumbled on that one.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure. Maybe they could update it? Yeah, absolutely. Quantum evolved out of HL Turner.
HL, right, they came out of HL Turner.
So HL Turner might refer us to quantum. Interesting, okay. So, yeah, sure, so the, a copy of the final historic landscape design for Toton Island Park is complete and incorporates comments from the public and the board, I've left copies in your plan for you to take a look at, not asking you to do anything tonight, not asking actually anything to be done, because that's so far down the road of what needs to happen over there, but now at least we have the plan, which will help with the land and water conservation grant, because we'll incorporate it into that. I've filed reports for the, the final grant report for reimbursement for the local emergency operations grant. We've gotten most of the money from Lowe's for the recycling center. You see from the information that I wrote in the FYI that when we originally went to get the quote for the baler, it was seventy-five hundred dollars, two or three months later, it's twelve thousand and change, I did ask Lowe's if there was any money to cover that, they said, no. I reached out to Tony Belanger, asking if there was any grant money available, there is, but it doesn't line up with when we need to get the baler, but there, but we do need, we will need a second baler, and that's, we'll go after grant money for that second baler through this, I can't, America the Beautiful or something. They also have grant money for signs down at the recycling center, so.
Yeah, cool.
So, we, Tim and I are gonna do a kind of an audit, find out where we're at with the leftover money from ARPA, and ask the board if they would consider closing that gap with some of the ARPA money to get the baler.
Can we find, if we can't do ARPA money, can we find it at the end of the year, monies?
I, I did ask Tim that, and you seem to think that we might be able to.
Okay.
Unless it goes up by another two thousand dollars.
Between now and then.
Get it now.
I sent you all in an email, the PrimeX rates.
Yep.
And uh, Kevin, uh, Selectman Scanlon sent me an email about meeting with the boiler contractor to review the operations. Kevin is going to meet with him, and, and I've sent him all your information. So it's all set there. Concrete pad at the senior center will be poured next week. The impound lot uh, concrete was poured today. R and D paving will not be coming in to meet with the Selectmen, so I'm guessing there's no need for me to call Porter Paving to ask them.
Great.
And that's all I have, unless anyone has any questions for me.
That's it. Okay. We um, next on our list is Selectmen's reports, but can we take like a five-minute break? Please?
Sure. Brief recess.
Just a brief, yeah.
Do you want this off?
Yep. No.
No?
You could stay if you want, Tom. Uh, Genie, right there.
Want to stop the recording? Okay.
Seems we have a birthday in the house.
Really?
Yep.
Not me.
Another year older. So now we can sing happy birthday to Tim, because he's another year old. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, we are back after enjoying a little cake for Tim's birthday. Happy birthday again, Tim. All right, Selectmen's Reports, Catherine.
Um, so the only thing I have a question about is the um, mixed use two not being in our term of permitted uses and doesn't seem to be in our ordinance. But yet, I believe it passed town meeting, so it exists somewhere. Could you follow us around that with Leanne?
What's that?
Mixed use two, why it doesn't appear in our charter of permitted uses.
This is the first I heard of it when it came up, so I.
Yeah, I have some.
Yeah. Yes, I will. Oh, oh, that's, oh, I thought you asked me if I knew about it. Yeah, okay. Ask me to check with Leanne, yes. Okay.
I know it's on that uh, Nando Road property. I remember when it was created, but it doesn't show up on our zoning map.
Not even on the Nando property?
No, it just says mixed use, not mixed use two, because I believe there is a difference between mixed use and mixed use two.
Capit, John?
Um, no lie, just um, the, we do have the scarecrow contest going on. Hopefully, people um, was it Parks that's doing that?
Yes.
Do you want to comment on, and then?
Um, the application, um, the application is on the town website. And I don't remember the, the cutoff gate, but um, yeah, just go to the town website and fill it in and make a scarecrow and put it in the park.
So the other thing good is, there's still one more hookup on Morris Nav that hasn't been completed. They um, they were supposed to get in there yesterday and do it, but they haven't yet. So hopefully that will get done.
Water?
Water, yeah. Everybody else is pretty excited and happy over there. Um, the next thing. I think that's. That's all I have for now. Yeah. Oh, I didn't remember what it was. I didn't write it down. So I want to thank Pat um, for finishing up the piece of wood for the statue, beautiful piece. You can probably see what it was of um, I think it was maple?
Cherry.
Cherry, beautiful.
Which statue?
Of the one that was up here that would.
The Diana.
Oh.
Diana.
The base for that statue.
Yeah, and um.
When do we bring it out?
And well, I was, it's actually, it's all ready to go. It's all completely reinforced and patched and everything to hold. It's very, very rugged. It's a beautiful piece of wood on the base, so it's so stable, you can't knock it over. And it's all anchored properly and everything, and um, I think it was.
I think John's going to present it to the Historical Society so that they can put it up.
So it is in my garage. I'd like to get it out of my garage. It's not appropriate if it's not being then to be stored there because, you know, if I got struck by a bolt of lightning, the family wouldn't know, what is this? Then we'd lose another one.
Where is it going to go?
I think.
Going to the Historical Society up at Tilton School.
They have the mansion up at the.
I know they're using the mansion to meet, so is our statue going?
All of the.
They created a room.
They created a room for the Historical Society for all their, their uh, historical stuff.
So are we loaning them the statue?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, there's an agreement.
We have an agreement with them.
How, it's all covered and all that.
Then catch up again, sorry.
Yeah.
So that's all set, and um, thanks, Pat, for.
My pleasure.
I can do the metal stuff, but I'm not good at woodworking. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm set.
Scott?
Uh, so I was gonna quickly, um, for those who had not seen, is that the Tilton Historical Society did sign off on their final agreement with Tilton School to be able to officially have their space in the um, in the mansion. So that is wonderful, and um, having, having been in the space, um, the entirely renovated front part of the mansion, I can tell you that it is um, it's, it's stunning. Um, the changes that have been made, the uh, the, the old pocket doors that have now been revealed and are usable again. Um, so it is, it's just, it's a wonderful place, and it's a wonderful place to be able to have the Historical Society. And I can tell as a, as a representative of the school, we're happy to have them up there, and that, and uh, the space progresses as well because there's other work being done. Um, but um, that is wonderful. Also, I know the long-awaited quick update. Um, Tim and I have been invested in the school district formula work. So uh, so it, it's, it has progressed. Um, we have a draft of um, what we will send to school board, et cetera. And in working with three towns, I, I, I can say um, that I think that the, the work and the discussion and the um, analysis of what would be um, appropriate in terms of the formula going forward and how to adjust the formula, um, I think have been very, very good. I think Tim would agree, not to speak for him, but I think it's been a very, very thoughtful process overall. So well, that will be out and um, out for consumption um, very, very soon. And that's it.
Joe?
Um, the bridge to the island was my one thing that I wanted to talk about, but I have a question about that statue. At one point, we were talking about, there were two statues, and they were going to go up on the, the stage over here. I'm wondering who paid to restore the statue?
So the um, there's the two statues, that's correct. One is the Indian, um, which is literally just the bust. Um, it's busted up good. Um, it would have to have some type of more of a structure built to hold the bust. The other one is, the other one, uh, it required um, some special welding material for it because zinc is softer than lead. Um, so you can't solder it per se. It would just crinkle away along with some special metal um, epoxy that's made from metal. And that was used, and uh, the reinforcement and wood, the finish, um, a lot of labor to try and get it back together. And um, the, that was all covered by Pat and myself.
Um, okay, so that leads to my real question here. Why are we displaying it at Tilton Mansion instead of in a public space? That people will encounter it, and because it's a Tilton, and I understand the Historical Society's stake in this, but I would love to be able to show it somewhere where people could see it readily, uh, before it went up to the mansion. I'd like to see it, for sure.
Well, we could always have it here for a while, but then we agreed with them that it would, uh, when, remember when John was here and he had had a makeshift uh, base of what he was hoping that it would look like. And then it would kind of go in with all of the other historical things, but we certainly could.
Well, I'd, I'd love to get some display of it in, in public spot.
Yep.
I, I know John Sorrello made a, a poster of it originally. That would be the same size that would mount behind it. Um, originally, we said that it would um, we discussed having it up here. It's quite heavy. There was concerns about it tipping over. It will not tip over now. Uh, you.
Well, I remember there was a tipping thing, but.
Then we decided, one of the other decisions that we made, and we decided that we would put it inside the downstairs door there. And that was because we were waiting for them to get the, what was going to happen with the space up there. But um, I'm okay for wherever, you know, if, I'd like to have it on my garage. I could get it down here if you just want to have it for a couple of days at the back door, but I mean, you've, it's like a staging area for a lot of stuff, too. It would be easier if I could get it there, and then, you know, just for the couple of weeks. And I think on November eighth, I think is the next.
Their next meeting.
Meeting of the Historical Society, and perhaps before that, they could.
Transport it up.
Yeah.
I agree with Joe. It would be nice to have it publicly displayed in town hall somewhere, so people can see it. Look, you know, put it on the website, let people know it's here, and that it is going to be loaned out to the Historical Society. So it will be gone from town hall.
Yep.
I think that's a good idea, Joe.
And uh, I pass to you?
I got quite a bit.
Okay.
All right, um, the seniors.
I don't have a truck anymore, I have a tractor.
The seniors uh, center executive committee is um, dedicating the stage to Elaine Grace. This is the plaque that the Department of Corrections has made, well, is making for her. And on October twenty-eighth at one o'clock, we will be dedicating it. Um, her family is coming up to see the dedication. We will um, put this up on the stage. Elaine, uh, along with all of the executive committee, because they're the, we're the core group that started the senior center, spent many, 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 many hours uh, getting it started. And there were a lot of laughs, and uh, and it reads, Elaine was instrumental in opening of the senior center. She brought joy, laughter, and unconditional love to everyone she met. We were fortunate to know her and call her our friend. So this is going up on the stage uh, for Elaine.
Is that AM or PM?
One o'clock in the afternoon on the twenty-eighth.
Oh, I thought, I heard, so I had it. I reversed it. I had the twenty-first.
What day is that?
Uh, it's Halloween, our Halloween.
Saturday.
Saturday. It's a Saturday, so her family could come up. On uh, November second, um, oh, at least twenty-plus years, Tilton School students, uh, we have ten groups of eight students plus a teacher. Will head out to Northfield and Tilton seniors and do a lot of raking and picking up of um, a lot of different things in the yard and, and, and head towards the fall and the winter, help them a little bit. They've done it for a number of years for us. So it's November second, one to three. We have a ten groups. Uh, the list is getting, we have a waiting list now. We've never had that, but we do have a waiting list, which is unfortunate. I wish we had more people, but we don't. So I thank Julie Caldwell for that. Um, she's our partner up there at Tilton School.
Have you ever tried to get the high school involved?
We did years ago, and then it petered out for some reason, and then we couldn't get them any longer.
You have a, there's a new um, person in charge of the Ag Center.
Oh, okay. We could reach out.
Yeah, I don't know her name. She came to the park commissioners' meeting, quiet, exuberant about, you know, doing things with the park commissioners, at the park, at Buffalo. I'd reach out to her.
Can you send me the name? Okay, that would be wonderful. We reached out to folks uh, in um, got a, an unbelievable return on uh, people paying for tickets, bus tickets to go, for seniors to go to the Gift of Lights. So we have five tickets already purchased by donations, and we'll make motions to accept those donations next week. Uh, thank you, everybody who participated. Um, the seniors absolutely love going to see the Gift of Lights, and they, the list fills up very quickly, and that's why we have five buses going. So November twenty-fifth, December second, December ninth, December sixteenth, and the last week of December to be announced. Genie answered my question on the generator. Um, I got in touch, uh, I didn't get in touch. He got in touch with me. Titus is still here in New Hampshire, which brought to mind that we should probably be start doing a committee that we said we would do. So we should keep that in mind and start that up. He's leaving on Sunday back to Florida. So I would also like to make a motion to unseal the portion of October fifth meetings regarding hiring and other personnel changes.
Oracle's second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. With that, I would like to announce that we have hired Eva Dupont, has been hired to serve as Tilton's administrative assistant. Um, I believe she's starting on Monday, correct? Yep. Um, another announcement that Lisa Oger, the former administrative assistant to the Tilton's Police Department, is moving to a part-time position. Um, and Nicole Kletz, the former dispatch supervisor, communication specialist supervisor, is now the administrative assistant to the police department. Brian Dumka is now the communications specialist supervisor to the police department. Halloween will be on Saturday, October twenty-eighth, from three PM to five thirty. Townwide trick-or-treat is on Tuesday, October thirty-first. Does anyone know what time the townwide trick-or-treat is? We'll have to ask Abe when he comes. And also, we have two resignations, and that's why you have one um, there. We have Anne Miranda officially resigning from the Parks Commission, and also Anne Miranda officially resigning from the zoning board, effective immediately. Franklin V and A has asked us if they could put this poster up downstairs. It's for their second annual hospice ball on November fourth, twenty-twenty-three, from five to ten PM. Does anybody have any objections?
Um, what type of things can we not, yes, post or not, no post?
Well, we have not accepted religious or uh.
Political?
Uh, political. Political. Political.
We're usually posts for nonprofits.
Right. I just want to make sure.
Taste of the trails and
Yeah.
Stuff like that.
Okay.
Good, good. Yep.
That's okay. I I'm pretty sure that's that that's all the announcements.
Yep. I just want to make one mention to the board. So last year, at the end of Halloween, end of October, then Detective Murray got pallets of Halloween stuff. And for whatever reason, I woke up in the middle the night last night thinking, those are down in the basement and they're sitting down in the basement. So we've got tons of stuff in boxes downstairs that we should bring up and use for the events this coming
On the twenty-eighth?
Yeah. I mean, there's all kinds of stuff.
You need help with?
Yeah. Looking through them?
Oh, no, I I organized. I I
Is it like decorations and stuff?
Everything. I mean, it's toys. It's
Anything we can give for prizes?
Yes.
Oh, good. Okay. We did receive some McDonald's, like they usually do. They sent it.
Liz Mary's Legacy Lives On.
Yeah, Halloween.
Yeah. All right. When do you want to meet to go down and look at them? Next week?
Yeah, I I gotta work on a grant tomorrow and open enrollment. So Monday would be better.
Do you have Monday night? We all meet, go down and look at it? Or do you have Selectman?
I don't have I don't have a Selectman's meeting. So, yeah, we could do that on Monday.
Okay. Anybody that can come on down and we'll look at them.
Anytime after four thirty, I'm pretty sure I can.
Do four thirty?
Four thirty? Yeah. We'll go down, look at things and we can give away his prizes. That'd be great.
Or are there decorations and stuff?
We have decorations. We have toys. We have costumes. All kinds of stuff.
Maybe we can find kids without costumes. Okay. All right. At this time hearing we didn't do the minutes, though.
I just want to say that the chief is downstairs.
Oh, okay.
We're way off schedule because the town administrator took too much time. I was following in Tim's footsteps.
I thought he was the one we were gonna worry about tonight. Should have taken you off the schedule.
Can we delay the minutes till?
Okay, we'll delay him. Okay.
The next week.
The time Yeah.
Yeah.
Time being six forty-five and make a motion to move into non-public per RSA ninety-one A colon three two, the dismissal promotion compensation of a public employer, disciplining of such employer, or the investigation of any charges against him or her unless the employer affected has a right to a public meeting, request that the meeting be open, in which case the request shall be granted in RSA ninety-one A colon three two B, the hiring of any person as a public employee.
Jessamine, second?
Roll call vote?
Jessamine, yes.
Ruggles, yes. Scanlon, yes.
Dawson, yes.
Constantino, yes.
This conference will